I'd like to call the meeting to order. As Chairperson of the School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, I am confirming that we are utilizing Zoom for the electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform, and that the public has access to contemporaneously listen by clicking on the following website address: We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the Board at www.lynn-wood.org/meetings. If anybody has any problems, please email Sharon Holt at shohlt@lynn-wood.org, or Debbie O'Connor at dconnor@lynn-wood.org. And with that, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of December 16th, 2020. Accept the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Vance.
I second.
Second, Joe, thank you. Are there any corrections, changes?
Yes.
Okay, Joe?
Let me step away from my printer because it's printing. I'm sure you guys don't need to hear that. Okay, on the page four, it's just spelling it and a couple things. Underneath staff, it says Mrs. Kirill instead of Ms. Grill. Second line and under staff.
Okay. Anything else?
Down towards the bottom, it just says Ms. Faith and Ms. Harrington. It should be Ms. Bossy because down the road, nobody's gonna know who that was.
And anything else?
That's all that I had, really.
Judy, do we need to do a roll call vote, or seeing that we can all be seen, does it... Would it be clean adjusted roll call votes? Yeah, alright.
Roll call.
Okay. Alright, via roll call, all in favor, Tammy Hamm?
Aye.
Brian Angelone?
Aye.
Joe Bossy?
Aye.
Vance Pickering?
Aye.
And I am also in favor, so that motion passes unanimously. The second item on the agenda is the approval of the non-public minutes of December 16th, 2020. I'll accept the motion. Thank you, Brian. Tammy with the second? All in favor? Tammy Hamm?
Aye.
Brian Angelone?
Aye.
Joe Bossy?
Aye.
Aye.
And Matt Manning is also in favor, and so is the little one. I think I heard an "aye."
I gotta say, sorry, my voice changed.
We're good. Okay.
Nicely done.
The next item on the agenda is communication correspondence. I know you had put some of PowerPoints from New Hampshire School Board. Was there anything else?
No, that was it.
And just to let you know, I did sign up online for the delegation there.
Oh, good.
For, oh, Judge, what is his name? I'll look it up. He's doing a webinar on the 26th, I believe, and I signed up for that as well.
Barrett Christina?
Nope. Judge Broderick, Justice Broderick.
Oh, right, right, okay.
So I'm doing that as well. And I'm assuming that the Linnwood School Board wants to vote the way that the New Hampshire School Board voted. They did make all their recommendations. I read through them all, and they all make sense to me. And I guess I'm just assuming that you all wanna go with the same with their recommendations to support.
Typically, if anybody had anything different from that, they would bring it forward at the meeting beforehand and let you know. But it's typical that we do kind of follow what their lead is.
Perfect, perfect, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Business Administrators, Deb?
Hi. Okay, I put some information in your package. Well, first of all, actually, manifest, now that we're doing more of the meetings virtually right now, you know, we run checks every week, whether it's payroll or accounts payable. So if you are able to, we just need you to stop by the SAU office. You know, it's just once a week, but we just gotta keep things moving. So in your packet, I did put some information. I sent out the bond hearing timelines. I'd actually sent that out in a previous email, but I put that in the packet again for your information, because we will probably be talking about that tonight. And I had reached out to the Bond Council just to make sure, you know, can we have a virtual bond hearing, which we can, just some additional notices to the public and a few things that we'll have to make sure we do if we proceed on that route. The next piece of information I put in the package is, again, just an update of where we are, budget to actual. I did that by the format that I usually present to you, by function, all the major function codes, and then I gave you a little bit more detail on the next couple pages. One is by even more detail of the functions, budget to actual functions, and then also by objects. So object is like supplies, or salaries, or health insurance, or things like that. So it's just a lot of information there, just a snapshot of where we are year-to-date. And I also put in there our grants that we got for COVID-19 for this year, and just showed you a breakdown of those grants and how we are spending or have spent that money, because most of it is either spent or spoken for. It will be spent by the end of the year, because some of the positions that we have that we've encumbered, we're using those grants for. So you can see all the information on the grants. I also put in, the last piece I put in, is I put some information on trust funds and capital reserves, because that has come up, and that was something that the School Board was gonna work on this year. And first of all, I had a history of trust funds and capital reserves within this district, because this district did have capital reserves at one point. And I think when trust funds came into existence, they started switching things over to trust funds. So you can see, I have a sheet, I actually had to prepare that for Department of Revenue was, this was a while ago, was collecting all this information from the district, so they could have everything in file. So just shows again that originally the school did have some capital reserve funds. It looks like they had a capital reserve fund for bus purchases for facilities, and then they, at the annual meeting, the public had voted to discontinue the capital reserve funds, and now we have all trust funds. I was actually at a meeting last Friday, our monthly New Hampshire ASBO meeting, and one of the things that came up was capital reserve funds versus trust funds. And someone asked the attorney, well, what's the difference, or what's the advantage, or whatever? So basically, they're the same thing. Both are the same as far as the care and custody of the funds. The trustees of the trust funds hold those monies. There's separate accounts, and the School Board can be named agents to expand the funds. The difference between the two, and they're open for a specific purpose. The difference between the two is, for the capital reserve funds, the School Board can just spend the money. But the trust funds, you have to have a public hearing, and all the notice requirements that go along with that. So, and that allows the public to come anytime, as you know, when you have any trust fund expenditures that are being proposed, the public can come in and weigh in on those. It was interesting, though, because he said, you know, you'd really, like, if you have a special ed trust fund, which we do, you probably wanna switch that to a capital reserve fund, because if you had to spend money out of some of these funds, like the special ed fund, and it's for a specific student, and now you're really getting into information that you really can't discuss, but you have to have a public hearing to expend those funds. So I mean, that might be one area, you might wanna talk about moving that trust fund back to a capital reserve fund in that instance.
What's the process in doing something like that? And what does the Board?
It goes through like a warrant article process. It goes during the annual meeting. That's when you can establish these funds, and you can discontinue, or whatever, but it's all through the annual meeting. That's when they can be set up.
And you can establish a CIP, a Capital Improvement Plan, and fund it out of either a capital reserve fund.
Right, and I mean, yeah, Capital Improvement Plan, I mean, that's just a name of a plan that you have. Like, we have a facilities master plan, whatever you wanna call that, and we've used that as a guide when we're, okay, we have windows, let's look at the facilities trust fund, oh, we have this piece of equipment, let's look, you know, that's how this district has done it. But yeah, I mean, you wanna obviously have that plan. So, and the way we've, you know, we bank a little bit each year, so when these things come up, or when we're saving for windows, or saving for a bus, or saving for whatever that's money is there. So they're good, you know, again, they both serve the same purpose.
I mean, is this something, are you recommending that we, for, at least for the Special Education Trust Fund, that's something that we change or put out as a warrant this year?
I mean, I know, in the beginning of this School Board year, you guys had discussed forming a committee to look at all these. I mean, I don't, I guess we could do that one right away, or if you wanna wait, I mean, you know, it would just have to go through the hearing process if the need came up within the next year, or before we changed that. I mean, I guess we could change that one this year.
I mean, that's the only one that really seems like it makes sense to move it.
Yes.
The others, you know, even if we did have a capital improvement plan, I mean, we could still go through the trust hearing to get public input based on the plan and what we're doing. But, you know, there's obviously some sensitive information in the Special Education Trust Funds, so it may make sense to draw a warrant for this year and just explain that as part of the meeting, and get a vote on that. That's my thought. Anybody else?
No, I agree, it sounds like a reasonable.
I mean, you might wanna get more specific on maybe a fund for boilers, or for a roof, instead of the general facilities trust fund that we have, just so you make sure, because again, you've used that quite a bit through the years.
That's something, I think that's something that the committee could specifically look at those, but I mean, as far as anything with any immediacy, then maybe it would be this, it would make sense to just put this out, you know, get the language from.
Yes, we can draft that up, yeah.
You know, it's pretty straightforward.
We do want to work on establishing a good CIP, but due to COVID, I just kind of, well, I talked to Deb a little bit, thought that it might be a good thing to wait a little and get through this first.
Yeah.
Yeah, moving that one trust fund, the Special Education Trust Fund to a capital reserve may be a good idea to do now before we establish it.
Okay, we can look at that language and bring that to the next meeting.
Thank you.
And I think that's all I have.
Anyone else have any questions for Deb? Seeing none, I'm gonna move on to Superintendent's report, Judy?
Yeah, just in your packet, you have your warrant articles, they're just draft. So, but you have this meeting and your next meeting to vote on them. I suggest, you know, whatever you can do this week would be good. You did get a packet of the Budget Committee inquiries, and we did respond to those for the first meeting, so we will be sending you, actually, we sent you, this is the second packet, and we do have another Budget Committee meeting tomorrow evening, so after that, we will send you whatever we have for that packet as well. Again, the webinars that we had attended are in your packet, and we do have voting for the list of policies that are in the second reading. The Board can vote on that, and I will be moving forward with the recommendation for the Middle High School Administrative Assistant.
Okay.
Also, we did speak with Wayne Fillion. We emailed Wayne Fillion, we communicated with Wayne Fillion, asking how much of a cost savings it would be if the district just did an oil system versus a oil and propane and oil. So he said it would be about $60,000, $60,000 less.
Okay.
That's it.
Do you have any questions for Judy? All right, hearing none, Mark, Principal's report.
Hey, good evening. Just kinda like to start off by saying, you know, a big thank you to our community members, our staff, and our students for just knowing how to roll with things, and they've done a really good job. And I know sometimes when we end up closing down, it can be really inconvenient to people. We have gotten kind of used to it, I think, as far as the routines go. Kids are following structure, the schedules that are set, and, you know, it's a testament to them and our teachers and our community for getting these kids on there. We are seeing better attendance on these Google meets now that everything is like scheduled out. We did have a couple of technical difficulties today and a couple days ago with telephone communications, but those things seem to be, some of it wasn't necessarily on our end, especially with the, especially with the telephone communications piece, that was more of a global thing on Crescendo's network, but we were able to get that up and running and resolve it rather quickly, I thought. And then today, you know, we had a little bit of a glitch with the Google Classrooms, but we had to go back incrementally and fix those. We couldn't just do like a batch setting and get everything online. Trey and Bart, you know, they're trying to work as fast as they can. They got up all the faculty, staff, and everybody else that we can see here, and then they're moving on to the kids, and we're hoping by the morning that all those should be available for the students. I'm just waiting on a confirmation for that. But other than that, the kids have been really good, they've been able to roll with it. We do continue to have some, some opportunities to learn from as far as what to do online, what not to do online. I think it's always a learning curve. Kids kind of sometimes think that, you know, they're just chatting with their friends, they don't realize that, you know, this is a classroom session, and it's actually an event taking place for schools, so we have to be aware of our surroundings and happenings. But overall, they're doing a wonderful job. Right now, we're gathering more information about these students and teachers who had to do some quarantining because of this last episode, and what we're doing is trying to determine what's happening with them, if they're still feeling okay, or if, like, the virus is kind of manifesting, and they're not feeling well. So we're using that input that the nurse is gathering today and tomorrow, you know, to look at next week, and what should we do for being open, being closed for next week. Regardless, that first wave of the situation there, what happened was, all those people will be finished quarantining this weekend, and I feel like if we decide to be back at school, then we'll, I'm sorry, if we decide not to be back at school, you know, we can still commit to some extracurriculars. I feel like because of the quarantine and that's take place, and the lack of spread, so to speak, that I know of and that we know of based on the previous cases, we are trying to figure out, should we be back at school? I know it's a four-day weekend, but I feel like, I feel like we can do it, and we probably should be doing it. There's always that extra added precaution, but I think when we look at that first wave of people being, who had to quarantine, and are now ending that, I think we'll be safe, and, you know, it looks like we have that opportunity. Regardless, we wanna keep moving with extracurriculars. What else do we have going on here? We've gotten some feedback as far as communication goes from parents. I feel like, I feel like the communications that we've gotten have been pretty positive. I know they're probably getting sick of all the little all-calls that I've been putting out lately, but, you know, we know that we wanna communicate, and we have gotten emails that say they really appreciate that, and also appreciate the fact that we're trying to get our kids back to school as well. So that's kind of where we're at, as far as the school goes, and hopefully we can move forward with next week and get everybody back in school.
Thanks, Mark, and just thank you to you and Jenny and Judy and the rest of the administrative team for how you handled last week. I mean, it hit quick, and there was a lot of moving pieces really quick, and there was a lot of anxieties throughout the community, and I think you guys handled it well, and you know, more communication's always better, so, you know, I think you guys did a great job with that. So thank you, guys, and for the teachers for, you know, obviously pivoting and doing the best job that they could, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody have any questions for Mark?
No, I'd just like to thank the custodial staff, too. I'm sure they are right out straight with all this.
Yeah, they are, they're working hard, and, you know, a good thing for them for this is some of them don't have to necessarily do the night shift, but, you know, that all fits your schedule, so.
Yeah, I know they're scrambling, so I mean, I just wanna put it out in public, thank you to them, because it's gotta be hectic.
Absolutely, they're doing a fabulous job. I almost forgot, like, the food service piece as well. We were able to put together food for people and families that needed, and if you continue to need it, all you gotta do is, you know, email us, we set something up on the website. Right now, we have, like, I think 18, 18 or 16 kids, 18 kids at any given time, that are utilizing this, and you know, we're, you know, I have to let you know that my, like, the counseling staff and Jenny and myself were doing food deliveries, able to check up on people. At first, we wanted them to just come and get the meals, but then we're like, it doesn't make sense, we have all these people quarantined, so we just had to figure out a way to get them everything, so, yeah, yeah, nothing goes perfect the first time around, but it went well, and we're able to deliver those meals, and I think I gotta appreciate the food service people and Jenny and our nurse especially. She's been, you know, she's actually not feeling well right now either, but it's not the COVID piece. So we're good with that, and we thank them, you're right, Joe.
All right, anybody else? Moving on to committee reports, I guess we'll start with Jay and the Policy Committee, if you guys are all right with that.
Jasmine, did you wanna say anything?
Sure, we covered some policy changes, additions, and some things that we're going to, I believe, retract some of our current policies based on things that are now mandated by the state. The ones that come to mind are about concussions. I don't remember them specifically, but they, correct me if I'm wrong, Judy, they were changes mandated or recommended by the state, and pretty straightforward. And we recommended moving them to first reading, and we still have time to review and make changes and adjustments if you guys see fit, but.
Yeah, there was changes and the omissions due to the redundancy of them being in different sections of the book and stuff, so, same as always.
Okay. So we'll see those next week, or next meeting for first reading. Were there any changes? We have quite a few for second reading and for withdrawal. Everything that's on that side of the agenda, that side of the policy list, I'm assuming, is as-is?
All set to go.
And I would just say, although I missed this evening's policy meeting, that it sounds like it's just part of the ongoing effort to try to simplify the policy handbook by removing some of the redundancies. We have policies that are the exact same in a number of different places, and there's been an ongoing effort to reduce that. I don't know if it's necessary to go over again all of the policy changes. I think I talked about them last meeting when they were on for first reading, about what, you know, what we were doing with the ones that are on for second reading. If there's any specific questions about anything in there, I'm happy to address those. Otherwise, I can make a motion.
Anybody have any questions for Jay on the second reading policies? All right.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to approve policies BDC, policy EBCG, policy EF-R, policy JJE. Make a motion to approve those policies.
I'll second.
Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion on those policies? Hearing none, I will roll call votes. All those in favor, Tammy Hamm?
Aye.
Brian Angelone?
Aye.
Joe Bossy?
Aye.
Vance Pickering?
Aye.
Jasmine Whedon?
Aye.
Jay Dugay?
Aye.
And I am also in favor. So that motion carries?
And I'll make a second motion to withdraw policies EBBC, policy JLC-E-R, and the policy labeled, I think it's labeled this way because it's in three places, but it's JLCCA/GB-GAA/IHAMC.
Thank you all. Joe's got it.
Okay, go ahead, no worries.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, Tammy Hamm?
Aye.
Brian Angelone? Joe Bossy?
Aye.
Vance Pickering?
Aye.
Jasmine Whedon?
Aye.
Jay Dugay?
Aye.
And I am also an "aye," so that motion carries. Thank you, guys, for all your work, that's a lot. Anything from facilities, Brian? I know you guys didn't meet, but.
Not at the moment, I mean, I think we'll just have to, just look towards what we're gonna put on the warrants, or as we go forward in the next week or so.
I'll have that a little bit later, so we can have that discussion. Joe, Budget Committee, anything you need to share or wanna share?
Well, Budget Committee did meet, with the minutes that I have in front of me are still draft. They're just asking good questions. You have a copy of the questions they're asking, you guys have what we responded, and it's actually quite productive so far, it's been relatively pleasant, so.
Any other committees that may have met between last meeting and this meeting? Okay. Business requiring Board action, staff nominations, recommendations, and resignations.
Is there a recommendation for Stephanie Olson for the Middle High School Administrative
You want a motion to approve that nomination? Do you want the motion to approve?
Oh, yes.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, Tammy Hamm?
Aye.
Brian Angelone?
Aye.
Joe Bossy?
Aye.
Vance Pickering?
Aye.
Jasmine Whedon?
Aye.
Jay Dugay?
Aye.
And I am also in favor, so that motion carries unanimously?
Aye, thank you.
Any new business? Continuing business, warrant articles, we all have the warrant articles in our packet.
Matt, you might wanna look at the budget warrant article first, and then you guys, because you had pretty much approved that before vacation break at your last budget work session, but you really can't, you have to officially approve it here.
That's, where is that, seven?
Article seven, and the budget, the school board number is at the bottom of that warrant So that's the number you would be voting on. So that's the number you would be voting on.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the school board and administration's recommended budget of eight million, three hundred eighty-three thousand and seven hundred ninety-six dollars to be moved to the Budget Committee. That properly worded?
For the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Tammy. Any discussion? I think we had it last time. So all in favor, Tammy Ham?
Hi.
Brian Angelone?
Hi.
Joe Bossy?
Hi.
Vance Pickering?
Hi.
Jasmine Weeden?
Hi.
Jay Dugay?
Hi.
And I am also in favor, so that motion passes unanimously. So I guess we'll we'll start, we'll go over back to backwards to Article Five to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred forty thousand dollars for the purpose of upgrading the HVAC system and controls at the Linwood Elementary School and to authorize the issuance of not more than five hundred and forty thousand dollars of bonds or notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA Chapter thirty-three, and to authorize the school board to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest there thereon. And further to raise and appropriate an additional sum of seven thousand five hundred and forty-one dollars for the first year's interest payment on the bond. I'll make a motion to approve that warrant article based on the fact that we did it, we approved it last year. The difference with this warrant article, this that number, though, is based on the upgrades to the piping and staying with a oil system. Is that correct? Or is this the propane number?
It's, yeah, it removed the propane pieces. It's using the oil system.
Did you get a second on that, Matt?
I did not.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Joe. Sorry, further discussion. So last year, the the warrant article was six hundred thousand, and that was based on a propane system. The warrant article that you're recommending for with is five hundred and forty, up to five hundred and forty thousand, and that's sticking with oil because the piping, the
Will be replaced.
Will be replaced. Okay. Discussion. Anybody?
We already have the eighty thousand to do the piping already, correct? That that's
That's in the current year's budget.
That's what I thought. Okay.
And it's being done.
That'd be completed prior to the end of the year?
The piping? Yeah, it should be completed within the next couple of months. We were hoping before the end of this month, but it's in process. It's out to bid. As we had discussed at the last meeting.
No, it's different, and I and I apologize for, we have different, you don't go on a calendar year. The school doesn't go on a calendar year. We just had to vote to encumber funds. If we were going to do that, that wouldn't be done till June, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I will roll call this. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor, Tammy Ham?
Nay.
Brian Angelone?
Hi.
Joe Bossy?
Hi.
Vance Pickering?
Hi.
Jasmine Weeden?
Hi.
Jay Dugay?
Hi.
Matt Manning, I am also in favor, so that motion carries. Article six, oh, do we we don't, do we have to go through and approve these all tonight? Do you want us to approve them tonight? Even these?
Sure. The the ones that you can.
Okay.
Just go through them.
All right, Article Six, to see if the district will set the salaries of the school board at one thousand dollars. The vice chairperson at twelve fifty, the chairperson at fifteen hundred, the board negotiating team at a hundred and fifty dollars per day, the moderator at ninety dollars per meeting, the school district clerk at two hundred and fifty dollars per meeting, the ballot clerk at eighty dollars per meeting, the supervisors of the checklist at ninety dollars per meeting, and the school district treasurer at four thousand dollars per meeting. The money of this article is included in Article Seven.
I'll make a motion. Okay, go ahead, Tammy. I'll second.
All right, so Tammy makes the motion, Joe second. Is there any discussion? I noticed I noticed Jay's wearing a tie. I think he might be looking for a raise.
Guess for the job you want.
Hearing no more discussion, all in favor, Tammy Ham?
Hi.
Brian Angelone?
Hi.
Joe Bossy?
Hi.
Vance Pickering?
Hi.
Jasmine Weeden?
Hi.
Jay Dugay?
Hi.
And I am also in favor, so that motion carries unanimously. On to Article Eight, to see if the school district will vote to approve the cost items included in the collective bargaining agreement reached between the Lincoln Woodstock Cooperative School Board and the Linwood Lincoln, the Linwood Education Association dash NEA dash New Hampshire, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits over those paid in the prior fiscal year. Year two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, an estimated increase of one hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred eighty-seven dollars. And you year two thousand twenty-two through two thousand twenty-three, estimated increase of one hundred and twelve thousand six, one hundred and twelve thousand six hundred thirty-five dollars. And further to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two fiscal year, such sum representing the additional costs attributed but attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits over those that would be paid at current staffing levels in accordance with the most recent collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Thank you, Tammy. You get a second? I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, Tammy Ham?
Hi.
Brian Angelone?
Hi.
Joe Bossy?
Hi.
Vance Pickering?
Hi.
Jasmine Weeden? Jasmine?
Oh, I, I, I.
I didn't hear you. Jay Dugay?
Hi.
And I am also in favor, that motion carries unanimously. Article Nine was a article that we tabled from last year. It's to see if the if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of sixty-five thousand dollars for the flooring replacement project included but not
But not Lin-
Linwood High School Main Office, Guidance Office, and Special Education Offices.
Can I interrupt you? Because we don't have those current numbers, so we're not going to vote on nine and ten tonight, correct?
Right, we don't have those, and and Mark was going to, we had, we have some numbers, but Mark was going to be here, and I'm not sure where he is.
Okay.
He might be having problems getting in.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Right, I'm glad you did. I had thought that this was correct numbers, so.
So we had talked about, and then when he updates the numbers, I believe the discussion was made that we'll go with flooring numbers as is what what we need to do, but it was the roof that we discussed as putting it together to just close out that project. So he was going to put together the last couple phases of that particular project, so we could just close out the roofing for this year.
Okay.
So nine and two will do it our next meeting. Does that give you enough time, Debbie?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, he might be trying, I can't see him in the meeting yet, but he was going to try to be here with that information.
All right, so why don't we move to the to the trust funds? Article eleven, to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate sixty percent up to the amount of sixty thousand dollars to be placed in the school facilities expendable trust fund with said funds to come from the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Thanks, Tammy. Thanks, Joe. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, Tammy Ham?
Hi.
Brian Angelone?
Hi.
Joe Bossy?
Hi.
Vance Pickering?
Hi.
Jasmine Weeden?
Hi.
Jay Dugay?
Hi.
And I am also in favor, so that motion carries unanimously. Article twelve, to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate ten percent up to the amount of ten thousand dollars to be placed in the school vehicle expendable trust fund said funds to come from the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first, two thousand twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve Article Twelve.
Thank you, Tammy.
I'll second. Go ahead, Matt. No worries. Just want to keep it moving.
Yeah, I hear you. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, Tammy Ham?
Hi.
Brian Angelone?
Hi.
Joe Bossy?
Hi.
Vance Pickering?
Hi.
Jasmine Weeden?
Hi.
Jay Dugay?
Hi.
And I am also in favor, that motion carries unanimously. Article thirteen, to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate ten percent up to the amount of ten thousand dollars to be placed in the school equipment expendable trust fund with said funds to come from the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first, two thousand twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve Article, was it fourteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Fourteen, sorry.
We had a second for Joe? Is that?
Yep.
Okay. Questions, comments? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor, Tammy Ham?
Hi.
Brian Angelone?
Hi.
Joe Bossy?
Yeah.
Vance Pickering?
Hi.
Jasmine Weeden?
Hi.
Jay Dugay?
Hi.
I am also in favor, that motion carries unanimously. Article fourteen, to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate ten percent up to the amount of ten thousand dollars to be placed in the school technology expendable trust fund with said funds to come from the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one unassigned fund balance available for transfer on July first, two thousand twenty-one.
I make a motion to approve Article fourteen.
Thank you, Tammy.
Second.
Thank you, Brian.
I think you tried to do the second last time, Brian, but your mic didn't unmute in time. You're just fast. You're so fast.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, Tammy Ham?
Hi.
Brian Angelone?
Hi.
Joe Bossy?
Hi.
Vance Pickering?
Hi.
Jasmine Weeden?
Hi.
Jay Dugay?
Hi.
I am also in favor, that motion carries unanimously. Article fifteen, to see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate ten percent up to the amount of ten thousand dollars to be placed in the school special education. Do we want to hold off on this?
Yeah.
Yeah, to see if we if
Yes, we'll work on changing that over to a cap or reserve fund, and then we'll bring that to the next meeting.
Okay, along with the numbers for the previous articles and then sixteen and seventeen, which are
The actual wording.
Okay. So that is, that's all we have to move forward.
We go back to Article Three and put Jay on the spot. I I know a little birdie told me that Vance does not intend to put his name on the ballot this year, and that is unfortunate. You will be missed, although I totally understand. How about Jay Clinton?
Oh, I do intend to run again, yes. When's the deadline for that?
It it's the twenty-seventh of January, it opens, the filing period opens the twenty-seventh of January and ends February fifth.
Um, and we need to encourage capable community members to put their name on the ballot. We need a replacement for Vance. All those, those will be big shoes to fill.
Who approved Vance of not putting his name back on the ballot?
Yeah, that's a good question.
That didn't come before the board, as far as I recall.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
I am going to move on.
Thank you.
Next item is the recognition of visitors and public participation. So I'm going to start with, I know Andy Barr is here from the staff.
Hello. I don't have anything, actually. No one, no one sent anything to share, so.
All right.
Matt, can we just step back?
Sure.
Just because so you went through all the warrant articles. So for that elementary heating system warrant article, which we're proposing to be a bond, we need to have a bond hearing.
Okay.
So again, I gave you all the timelines, and at that hearing, we would bring in the engineer to go over the project and answer any of the questions, just like we did last year. We follow basically the same timelines we did last year. So we'd we'd like to have the hearing before our full budget hearing, which is on the tenth, so.
Can we have them the same day?
You you can. It meets within the timeline. It's just that that that's a pretty busy night. Because you have the, you have a regular board meeting after the budget hearing.
So do you want to talk to Wayne and see what nights he might
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to meet with Wayne to see when he can do it. We are looking at maybe February third because that also gives us enough time to get this all posted and get all the notices out to the public.
Right.
You know, the end of January, it's really cutting it close right now, so maybe February third, that's what we're looking at.
Okay, yeah.
That works, and it will most likely be a virtual meeting, unless you guys want to do it in person. But and then we'll also have to discuss the budget hearing and that whole, because right now all of our meetings are based on being in person, but we can do them virtually.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll we'll target target the third. We just kind of flag that on your calendar, and then if it needs to change and Wayne can float some other dates, that would that would work, too, so.
We'll let you know.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Thanks.
That's okay. That's all right. All right, it's now community. Just if you could just raise, use the raise your hand icon if you would like to share and they can get led into the meeting. I do have to ask for Melissa's last name so that we can record that for the the actual minutes to the meeting.
And I'll I'll allow Melissa to talk. Hold on a sec.
Okay.
Okay, Melissa's in, and she can identify herself, please.
Oh, it's Melissa C. Oh, okay, it's in the chat. Sorry.
Oh, it is in the chat. Okay.
Okay. Sorry, Melissa. Is there any hands raised? For public comments? Because I don't see them on my end.
Yes, Paul, okay. Paul Schirdwin. Okay. Paul is in the meeting right now.
Hi, y'all. I just want to ask a quick question. I know what a, I know you guys is tired to hear about the test course, but we did say that in January we'd be going over those. So I was wondering if we're going to be going over those in January?
Yes, we have another board meeting at the end of January, and those, the test scores will be reviewed with the board at that time.
Okay, and the other thing is, I I did attend a budget meeting and just apparently we're spending one eighth for our budget on overhead. So I guess that's like a million dollars or something like that. And I think everyone on the Budget Committee said that was needed to be looked at closer, and I just, you know, just want to raise concern that I that I think that's a, that's an awful lot of money. But that that's all I got.
Thanks, Paul.
Can can I just ask a quick question that's related to Paul's first question, which was my understanding that was that the testing that we were going to be doing in January was delayed because of last week's remote learning shut, COVID-related shutdown? Is that accurate?
No, the the testing that he was talking about is a is a testing that was done in the fall. And and it and it was last year's testing that we did not get done in the spring. So they took it in the fall. That's the information that we will bring forward and and at the next meeting.
Okay.
Right, but wasn't there a couple of grade levels that, for some reason, there were difficulties or technical difficulties that didn't take their tests? And they were scheduled to take the tests last week or before? Is that? No, I had thought I thought that was the case. Everybody's done with their their standardized testing.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, well, I will, if there's no other hands raised.
John, I just have two quick questions. Are the budget meetings recorded and posted?
Yes, they are.
All right, on the school's website, on the SAU?
On the YouTube, Kane Connection YouTube.
Kane Connection YouTube. Okay, thank you. And are we going to meet with the moderator to find out his recommendations for an annual meeting?
Yes, we will. We will be looking at that. We're trying to wait a little bit to see how how everything works out with the with the, you know,
Okay.
Time.
Good, okay. Perfect.
Same, I mean, have the towns come to any decisions?
Yes and no. The the decision that the town of Lincoln has made is that we would love to go ahead with, you know, in-person voting and have an in-person meeting, well-spaced, everybody wear masks, keep your distance. But it all hinges on where the school is at, because that's where we have our meetings. And if the school is not allowing people in, then we need to do something differently. And so, yes, we've made a decision that that's what we'd like to do. However, nothing is set in concrete yet because, you know, oven.
Sure. All right, anything else? Hearing and seeing none, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
First from Joe Bossy, a second from Tammy. All in favor, Tammy Hamm?
Hi.
Brian Angelo?
Hi.
Joe Bossy?
Hi.
Vance Pickering?
Hi.
Jasmine Whedon?
Hi.
Jay Dugay?
Hi.
I am also in favor and we are adjourned and thank you, everybody. Hang in there.
Thank you.
All right.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
Be safe, everyone. Stay healthy.